...agenda with the two amendments, the first being the meeting minutes of June 8th, 2015 be amended to reflect ordinance 6239 passed by a vote of five to zero. And to remove seven C2 from the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we've got six public hearings. If you would like to address the council in regards to any of these public hearings, as we read them, please step forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record. The first public hearing, this is time and place for a public hearing, is advertised on the matter of resolution 16-163 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and cost estimate for the Valley View Park Culvert project is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone who would like to address the council in regards to this? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 15-164 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and cost estimate for the Mid-City Trail Project Phase Two is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there, is there anyone who would wish to address the council on this? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to say, I'm not sure that while this is a good project, I'm not sure about the timing on this. The difference in cost between this revised effort and the last effort that we, that we considered back in April, they're roughly the same cost, even though the scope of the project has been greatly downsized. The biggest expense that stands out in this project is about $400,000 in concrete work. And, and we've had various situations come before this council in the last few months where big costs on projects were significantly greater than what the city had originally estimated because of all the other related construction that's going on in the town at this time. So it seems like we're kind of working not only against those projects, but some other projects that perhaps have a greater priority, but that's my only comment.
And I, and I agree, those are certainly significant things to take into account. And I think at the same time, however, it does provide a safe passageway as we continue to make our trails connect, in this case, between the Riverfront Park and the trails towards the center and east part of town. It also removes, I'm sad to see it go, but it turned out to be too expensive to have it connect to Loop and connect through TJ. And I know my colleague had some concerns about that, and that's now removed in an effort to save money. And so I think that's another thing to take into account, that it is a more direct route, and it removes any concerns people had, and I can understand those concerns regarding the school. I disagree, but I understand and appreciate them.
And I think, you know, I'm very optimistic that this increase in construction in Council Plus will continue. Prices aren't really probably going to go down. I know several projects are there getting ready to start building, so it'd be my hope that we wouldn't see any slowdown in building, and therefore it's probably not going to get any cheaper to do it later, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 15-165 approving plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate for the central fire station window project is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any, anyone here who would wish to speak in regards to this particular Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 15-166 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and cost estimate for the Recreation Complex West Ballfields Drainage Improvement Project is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6238 amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15-02-040 by rezoning the east two-thirds of 3201 Fifth Avenue and the east two-thirds of the property at 510 South 32nd Street from C1 Commercial to R2 Two-Family Residential as defined in chapter 15.09 is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council in regards to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is just about a...
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I'm Monty Wilson. I reside at 732 Willow Avenue in Council Plus, Iowa, and I'm representing Carlos Torres on this matter. It's basically about a couple of little houses that are used and have been used for homes since 1920s. I think originally one of them was a little neighborhood store, and the zoning just never got changed. We're under a contract now to sell one of them, and it can't be financed or insured without the zoning change. I would just recommend that...
Does anyone have any questions for Monty?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6239 amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.020.040 by rezoning the property located at 1400 Avenue M being lots 1 through 3, Block 2, Thompson's Edition from R3 Low-Density Multi-Family Residential to I2 General Industrial as defined in chapter 15.21 is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council in regards to this matter?
Good evening. My name is Lyle Bittmarson, attorney with the Peters Law Firm in Council Plus. My address is 233 Pearl Street. I'm here today on behalf of Gain Eden, who's the applicant in this case. This afternoon at the study session, I went through our request checklist, and rather than bore you by going through it again, just say that we're here. I've got myself here today, both of the Edelman's who run Gain Eden are here. Abe is going to address you, and two of the neighbors that live immediately adjacent to the property are also here as well. One thing that we didn't answer today, because I had forgotten, and Abe has now told me, is that they actually have two containers on a continuous basis at the fleet management building for the City of Council Plus. I thought it was for something different, but I was wrong. So if anybody has any questions for me that have come up since the study session, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd just have Abe come up and tell you a little bit about the operation, and he can give you a little better idea of the cooperation that his company and his dad's company have with the City of Council Plus and the police department in particular, because I know that was a concern. So Abe, if you'd step up here, please.
My name is Abe Edelman. I live in Oakland, Iowa. Do you need my address, too, and everything?
Yes.
46549 Hickory Road, Oakland.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to first start off by apologizing for upsetting everyone on City Council. That wasn't one of my goals. And basically, we got misled on where to put our fence and everything else, so we really don't want to cause any problems, if possible. But basically, we do work with the police here in town on all the scrap metal we buy. Everything is IDed and fingerprinted. Every customer gets fingerprinted and IDed, and then their picture ID is stapled to the fingerprint card. And then the detectives from Council Plus come in and pick them up every week on Thursday, usually. And if they're looking for anybody that's not a good person, we always help them find that person, because I usually know all the people that come in there, from the smallest guy to the largest, so. And we just want a clean operation. We don't want oil on the ground, and messes, and garbage, and everything else. We just want a, basically, a green company, and we're, we're just, basically, a nonferrous operation, which is non-magnetic metals. We do get into magnetic metals, but not as much as we do the nonferrous. But if there's any questions you guys have for me, I'll try and answer them the best I can.
Any questions, Frank?
I was going to ask, I wouldn't ask you to speculate too much on the economy or the future of metal prices, but assuming a rosy economic outlook, how, how would you see this impacting your, your ability to possibly expand your, your business and provide more, more employment?
Well, right now, the commodity prices are pretty low compared to what they've been, so it, it's a struggle, and we have a lot of competition here in town. We have alters. They're in the top 10 in the world as far as scrap metal dealers, so we're, you know, we're just a small fish in a small pond. But, you know, we try to cater to everyone, so when they come in, it's clean, and they don't have to worry about flat tires. We offer to pay for their tires if they have a flat and stuff like that. And we never have a large amount of industrial waste laying around either. That includes waste oil from our trucks, and, you know, any garbage in our facility that's, you know, like broken pallets and boxes and plastic. We get rid of all that stuff as it comes in, so we usually get rid of maybe 2,500 pounds of, of waste material a month there we haul off. So we haul it all, we usually haul it to Omaha, to be honest with you. The reason I haul it there, it's a lot easier, because I don't have to sort anything, I just dump it. It's like 25 bucks a ton, and I'm out of there. So that's basically why I take it over there, but that's basically it. And we buy, you know, non-magnetic metal. We supply roll-off containers to our customers, boxes, pallets, barrels, and trucking. So that's basically our services that we do.
Other questions?
So the fence, the fence that is up there, depending on what the zoning ends up to being, you, you are committed to moving the fence?
That's right. We'll definitely move it to wherever it's supposed to be. That, that's whatever it's supposed to be, that's what we want to do. We want to go by the law and not break any laws with that fence.
And have you...
Like I, again, I want to reiterate, we're very sorry about the fence and everything. So if, whatever, whatever we have to do to fix it, we will do it. We want it surveyed properly with the council, City Council, so it's in the right spot, so we don't have any problems when we take the fence down. So we're prepared to take the fence down and get it put back in the exact place it's supposed to be. So whatever you guys tell us to do, that's what we're going to do, by the book.
Other questions? Thank you.
Obviously Abe's very difficult to deal with. Just tell him what to do, and he's going to do it. We've got two of the neighbors who were, who live in the area were kind enough and to step up here, Randy and...
Jim.
Jim. If you thought, just come up, state your name and address, and tell the good folks here on the City Council where you live, and if you're in favor or against.
My name's Jim Gray. I live on 14th and Avenue M. Kind of catty-corner from the business, and I'm good with it. They never have had a problem with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are, are you a homeowner, or, okay, perfect.
I'm Randy Victor. I live on 14, 1411 Avenue M, directly south of the lot that's in question, right across the road from it. I've been there for 10 years. The first six years, there was a couple houses there. One of them was a ongoing meth lab, drug house. The police were there weekly, if not daily. It was entertainment to sit on our porch and see which person's getting arrested, beat up, every day, every week. I'd call the cops, and I got told that we had to leave him alone because we're looking for the big person. And it got real annoying, knowing I was a homeowner, and there's nothing I could do about it, and when I called, I got told, there's nothing I can do. He's been in roughly four years now, um, four, five years, and it's been nothing but for quiet, peaceful, clean. It's a good, happy neighborhood now. So it's been a big improvement, so I'm hoping that you guys can help him do what he needs to do to keep the neighborhood better. They built a homeless shelter right beside him, and that's, I got told that was going to be a great thing, too. We have some problems with that place, and he's been a major upgrade to the neighborhood and good addition to the neighborhood, and I'm all favor for everything he has done for our neighborhood. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes our presentation, unless somebody has some additional information for us, or additional requests. We'd be happy to cooperate in any way possible.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I would ask the record to reflect that the council is in possession of a document entitled Conditions for the Rezoning of 1400 Avenue M. It's a document that I prepared, and it has been executed by the applicant and their attorney, and Iowa law allows us to place these conditions on a rezoning if we think it's necessary to address some, some special needs because of the neighborhood. I've also provided you a copy of section 1521020, principal uses. These all would become eligible uses but for these conditions that they have agreed to. Some of them, because of the size of the lot they would need to be established on, are not practical, obviously, at this location, but there are a couple uses there that probably would be offensive to some of the neighborhoods.
And, you know, with some of those uses that are in there, I, I feel better about the contract zoning, because especially the trucking facility, those roads wouldn't be able to handle a lot of that type of heavy traffic, I don't think. So I appreciate that they're willing to do the contract zoning and...
Yeah, I mean, this, this definitely gives me more of a comfort level. I was not very much in favor of it two weeks ago. I did drive down there. I've done some more research, contemplation. This long list does, a few of these things would concern me, so I do appreciate having this. Mr. White?
The public, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I2 had reservations at our, excuse me, at our last meeting, but they, excuse me, have been more than met by the applicant, been rather completely straightforward. Any of my concerns have been addressed. I, I'm particularly impressed that the, the folks in the neighborhood are so enthusiastically in support of the proposal. You, you don't always see that. In fact, oftentimes, you don't see that. And to me, that's a very good sign, that it must be a good thing, and so who am I to question that? So I'll support it.
Well, and, and my only reservation continues to be the, the fact that the Community Development Department recommends denial, and it is an encroachment into the residential makeup of the area, so, you know, there's no telling what the long-term impact. I think the conditions make it a little bit better. So even though I was totally against this two weeks ago, I'm inclined to support it this evening, and I do appreciate the kind of operation that you're running. It, it seems like a very, a needed service, and that you've definitely upgraded the, the area based on comments from the neighbors.
If the public hearing portion is closed, I would make a motion to approve the contract zoning for this parcel.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to thank, thank you folks for, for coming forward. It's, it's very, it's very important to me to know that the, that the neighborhood supports this type of, of proposal, and that, that neighbors are working together and, and being, being good neighbors, looking out for each other. That's, it's a very refreshing thing to, to see. And, and I also like the fact that this helps a small business in this town help improve not only the, the neighborhood, but also possibly provide some future expansion. I like to see us doing as many things as we can in this community to help out small business people, particularly the ones that are so well-regarded by their neighbors.
Well, and my final comment is, and the reason I asked if you were a homeowner versus renter, because that gives me, again, more of a comfort level, that it's, it's not really a fluid environment, that you are homeowners, you're, you're committed to your property, you're committed to the neighborhood, so appreciate that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Would it be appropriate, I, I know that we're approving the contract zoning, but we're otherwise approving the, the ordinance, so would a motion to waive third reading be appropriate? I'd so move.
Would be appropriate at this point.
I'd so move.
Second.
Discussion on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on first reading, ordinance 6240 amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.040 by rezoning the property legally described as the southerly portion of Lot 26 and all of Lot 27 Country Club acres from C to Commercial District to I2 General Industrial District as defined in chapter 15.21 and setting a public hearing for July 13, 2015 at 7:00 p.m.
Move the ordinance subject to Public Works' suggestion for full compliance with city stormwater standards and set public hearing for July 13, 2015 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that I'm going to hang on to this piece of paper, because it's also applicable, the uses in I2.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 15-167 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an Iowa Department of Transportation agreement in connection with the I-29 and I-80 interstate improvements.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, sorry?
I'm feeling better this time. Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. Is this, any of these two with the I-29 and 80 with, for the 40th Street?
They are extended relocations of utilities in conjunction with the interstate project, and so I'm not sure...
This doesn't have anything to do with the, from 41st Street to 40th Street?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, Bruce.
Well, you, the, the plan is for Playland.
No, it's not.
That's what I wanted to know there. The answer to that right there.
Any discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-168 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an Iowa Department of Transportation agreement in connection with I-29 and I-80 interstate improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-169 selecting the concept drawings from MTRL Design for the Public Art Park signage package to be installed in Fairmont Park as an element of the return to Fairmont Park project and authorizing the Department of Parks Recreation and Public Property to coordinate the final design of the signs and advance their fabrication and installation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the artist who came up with the design. It's beautiful, and I know there'll be some things that'll change a little bit before it's all said and done, but they really are beautiful designs for those signs.
I'm just going to say, I think this is a great example, too. This had a lot of public input. There were several meetings. The public truly did get to have a lot of influence on what the artist came up with, so I know that's something a lot of people have talked about in the past with art, is wanting a chance to have input, and this was really a great example of how that worked out, so.
Yeah, and I want to echo those comments. It's, that's what I was going to say. There's been art projects in the past that really didn't allow for any public input, so something, something like this is really appreciated.
I'd also, as part of that, I'd also like to thank the Public Art Commission, the residents who serve on that committee, who give, volunteer of their time, and really take a, a good look at different art proposals, no matter who proposes it, to put on city property. And it gives folks a chance to, to talk with them, to give their ideas, and it truly, it truly makes it a fantastic thing where, where no one could ever say again that the public does not have a say in public art on their land. They do, and I, and I'm very proud of that fact, and want people to know it, and I, and I thank them for their service.
Bruce, name and address for the...
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I just wanted to know if there's going to be two or three signs.
I don't think we can answer that question for you, because it's based on budget.
Okay.
At a minimum, the Parks Director said he would like to do entrance signs, and then...
Those three entrances, and they were only talking about doing the two, and they keep forgetting about the one that comes off of Park Avenue and everything like that.
There's potential for wayfinding signs, donation commemoration signs, but all that is, again, subject to budget and money raised, so.
You can be assured that, you know, of, of, all three entrances are important, but we have to look at the most trafficked first. And I assure you, if possible, the Park Avenue entrance won't be forgotten, but it generally isn't the one that gets the most traffic and the one people said they wanted first. So we're just trying to prioritize. Let's hope we've got enough money.
And donations are always welcome.
I don't have a fixed income.
Every dollar helps.
That's, just so people know, that's the one that the Noon Rotary Club adopted for a hundred thousand dollar donation, so.
Very, yes, very generous.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-170 authorizing the Department of Parks Recreation and Public Property to submit a state recreational trails grant application for City-County Connector Trail.
Motion to... Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Second time's the charm.
Well, it's third time, but we don't want to jinx it.
Third time, is it? Well, no, 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 I'm trying to, you know, second time's the charm, man, second. Let's hope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-171 authorizing the mayor to submit a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development lead lead-based paint hazard control grant program and healthy home supplemental funding application and execute any related contracts with HUD upon award of funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-172 authorizing the adoption of the Operations and Maintenance Manual for the Missouri River Industrial Park Levy in connection with FEMA certification... certification.
Yeah, mo- motion, I don't think that was removed, but I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to, is it appropriate to postpone or table? Postpone. Motion to postpone until our next meeting on July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, seven P.M.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolution fifteen dash one-seven-three, authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgment settlement agreement from L E S Corporation D B A D N S Express.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations seven A, B, and C, but omitting number two on seven C.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign. Madam Clerk, any requests from citizens to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience like to?
Bruce Kelly, eight sixty-four McKenzie Avenue. I was kind of, I read the paper quite a bit and everything else. And yeah, as you're reading stuff, you go, "Oh, that sounds good." But it s- seems like every time somebody gives us property, we immediately have to tear it down. I know he, and that's the Iowa West Foundation. All of a sudden, that property is torn down. I don't know who pays to tear these buildings down. Does the city pay?
Uh, city taxpayers typically pay-
City taxpayer. Then, then they're automatically taken off the tax roll. And then the city has to maintain this property until it is, some way, somebody either figures out what they're going to build on the property or what, what the Iowa West Foundation would like us to have put onto this property. I'm not a real fond supporter on some of the things that the Iowa West Foundation does.
And I don't think it really has anything at all to do with Iowa West. It really has historically been a problem, but more so after two thousand and eight, homes that essentially have a value, it's either no value or at least less than their mortgage value, get abandoned by the property owner. And then the property taxes, you say, take it off the tax rolls, but the property taxes don't get paid. The house perverts to a state of disrepair, which brings down the value of the rest of the neighborhood. And it's really a philosophical argument that the council had when I was on there as to whether you expend taxpayers' dollars to do the maintenance. And in some cases, that maintenance means taking down the house so that it's not a public nuisance, not an attractive nuisance.
Two of these were commercial businesses.
I think these are the West Broadway corridor properties. And, and Bruce, what I would tell you on that is-
That's Iowa, that's Iowa West money. I'm-
Did I pay to tear these buildings down?
Yep.
The commercial.
Part of it. And part of it is Southwest Iowa Foundation.
Yeah, Southwest Iowa.
And, and you have to get these properties when they're available and when the funding sources are available. So it's not as easy as just waiting until we need them, so.
Well, see, if you read the paper, the paper didn't put it in that way. It says they donated the property to the city and the city had to tear the buildings down.
They were paid for.
With the greatest of respect, some, not, seldom is anything a hundred percent accurate in anything, so no disrespect to that paper.
You know, you read that and you're going, "Really? We can't do this. I can't get a sign up with the car."
I said that nicely, I think. And, uh-
He's quoting you, Nate.
I'm sorry. You know, I'm sorry. You know. Well, the, you know, there, there is quite a bit of controversy that happens now and again on what happens, particularly on what I'll call the West West Broadway corridor. And by that, I mean West Broadway, west of the Viaduct. Because West Broadway actually starts First Street. The hundred block is the first block of West Broadway.
I know that.
So, just so we're clear, people want to see great things happen in, on our front door. And I agree. I think, I think most people agree. The tough thing is, is how is a business to come in and to be able to assemble a property and be able to build something nice and new that people want to buy? Because what people want to buy ultimately be what succeeds or not, you know? And it's, it's through your elected representatives that it's decided what we, what course we pursue policy-wise, like the mayor was talking about. It's not anyone else. We're very grateful to receive funding from other sources, but your elected representatives make the decision, not anyone else. And a good example on West Broadway, and this is before my time on the council, but as I understand it, the, what I'll still call the new Hy-Vee, the Hy-Vee at twenty-fourth and so of, of West Broadway, twenty-fourth Street. You know, a street used to go through there, twenty-fourth. And then that property was assembled together to allow a fantastic new grocery store and meeting place to, to help with competition and places for people to go in the west end of our community. And that wouldn't happen with, without projects like this. And, you know, this is a good example of the government working to leverage the costs to make it possible for private business to be able to build on what's called brownfield, existing property, rather than build everything new out in suburbia, if you will. They can build in town where we already have streets that people are having to pay for.
You already know that I'm one hundred percent on West Broadway.
I, I bring that up because, because I think what, in our discussions you and I've had outside of here as well, if I may say so, I, I think the goal of this is act- I think these means meet the goal that, that you and I are both in favor of. It's just, it doesn't happen overnight. And it has a lot of details and moving pieces to it. And again, no disrespect to anybody. It's, it's really hard to cover that in, you know, a couple hundred words. And, but it's through folks like yourself coming in and asking questions that people learn more about it. And so, thank you.
Bruce, I just wanted to share with you how that works, is that we identify properties we would like to be able to assemble with other parcels. And there's a fund made available through the Southwest Iowa Foundation and the Iowa West Foundation. They don't determine, they don't even say, "Hey, we want you to tear this building down." These funds are available for that use over, and I think it was each year.
A million dollars a year.
It's a million dollars a year. So it's, it's literally the city council that's making those decisions on which parcels to buy with those funds.
Okay. My next thing is, I'm not a fan of bike trails, but if you're going, and I brought this up before, to get the trail over the hill from Fairway to Sims, I know it's state property and all that, but why can't the city and the Parks Department get together with them to finish that? That, and you're, because you want the other part to go on the railroad high, down the highway there. We need this. I've been saying it for a couple, couple of years. We need this, just not because of bicycle, but because we have pedestrians in the winter walking on the highway. And the only way it's going to be done is the city and the county and the state puts their head together and figure out what their, to just go those, that, those few blocks. There's only two driveways and one street. I know they might have to change some of the water runoff and all of that.
There, there's some, as I understand it, and I'm certainly no engineer, there's some sightline issues and some elevation issues. But, you know, I agree that we ought to try to do these things, just like tonight, one of the, the votes we took, and I think, I believe it was unanimous, was a second attempt at getting some state money to, to connect one railroad highway, I'll call it one ninety-one forever.
That highway is county now. This is a state highway.
Well, yeah, indeed. It, it is once, once you're out of the city.
It should be finished because it's, it would bring everybody, it, it'd be faster and everybody, I know it would be used.
We, we just have to find the money. And that, that's the rub of it, the long and short of it.
If the, the state's giving out money for bike trails, why don't they help, you know, go, "Hey, maybe you guys make an agreement to mow it and keep the snow off it."
I can assure you that, you know, the, the city, especially through the Parks Department, is in discussions with the state on all these sorts of things, a lot about trails. And it's just, which do you tackle first? And, you know, sometimes we're going to disagree about the order.
Where is the bike trail that comes in from the east into Council Plus?
North of town from, the, the county has plans to connect along railroad highways, I understand.
Railroad highway. But where does it come to downtown Council Plus?
Well, part, part of this is, you know, without a map in front of me, I couldn't tell you for sure. But part of this in different phases, for example, the mid-city trail phase. And one of them, we voted on tonight, Phase Two, is about connecting the different pieces. It's kind of like Legos, you know, to complete the project, there are a couple pieces. And we, we can't do it all in one year because, again, it all comes down to money.
Oh, yeah.
Valley View.
Yeah, there's a trail right there. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. You're, you're quite right.
But Valley View is a blacktop road.
There's a trail.
Well, there's a trail along it. It's quite a bit of use.
All right, your, your five minutes are running out, so.
Well, no, no, it's just something I just need, that's an answer to, because I brought it up before and it, and I'm, like I said, I don't give two hoots about a bike trail. I don't even believe in them and that. But if we're going to do it, finish the one that stopped at the top of the hill.
Thank you.
Bruce, good point.
Anybody else from the audience? Anyone from the council? Oops, sorry.
I would- I know you guys just, I'm Leanne Hughes, fourteen-twenty, North Twenty-first. I had the pleasure of talking with a gentleman today that we've done some work with over the last couple of days. And he is an out-of-town contractor. And the words that he had to say about some of our city council was absolutely amazing. He said he was very impressed with how well you guys work together and how excited you are about our town. And I just, he said, "We're very lucky to have a city council that works this well together. And everybody seems to have the same motivation." And some cities are not that lucky. So, and going forward, I know we have an election coming up, I would just like people to know that even people from out of town know how lucky we are to have you guys as a city council who is encouraged, motivated, and working for us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'd say one thing.
No.
I don't care about that.
Oh, you're done. Sorry.
Always on the, about Officer Becker. He's retiring after thirty-six years. I appreciate it all. Some of you are all giving up.
I will be there.
And that will be Friday from one to three o'clock. Officer Greg Becker is retiring after three decades. And so thank you for pointing that out.
I will be there.
I will, too, yeah. So I can, I would just wanted to say that this is the last meeting in June, so I wanted to bring up again the Let's Talk About CB campaign and encourage people to please go to letstalkaboutcb.com and complete the survey. Focus group meetings will start mid-July, run through mid-July to mid-August. But this is your opportunity to, to tell us what you think about the city. The mayor's office is spearheading this, this project. And I, I hope that you take the time to go online and complete the survey. Thank you.
Anything else? Have a safe and happy Fourth of July. Word, Jerry.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. June seventh, the most beautiful horses in the world come to town for the Gala of the Royal Horses. Then September twenty-seventh, Papa Roach with headliner Five Finger Death Punch. The MAC offers free parking for all events, including those in the convention center. July tenth and eleventh, enjoy all things British, movies, and more at British Fest. Then Spirit of Courage Celebrity Weekend takes place August eighth and ninth. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.